The council regular meeting, this is Tuesday, January the 8th, 2019. It is 3:00 PM. We'll have the call to order followed by the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey.
Let's pray. Thank you Father for another day that you allowed us to see. Thank you for those who are here in this place. We pray for them, we pray for that family member, pray for this country, pray for those who are servants of the people. Lord, we ask that you give us direction to do the things that are beneficial to those we serve. Lord, we ask that you would help those who are hurting and those who may be sick among us, heal and give recovery. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You gotta give up some cigarettes.
Just a quick reminder, please silence your cellphones and we'll have the roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present?
All right, approved minutes of the December 18th, 2018, regular meeting and dispense with the reading. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. All in favor? Please vote. Hold on, I'm on the wrong, or whether you are or not.
Where am I? I don't have a vote thing.
Oh, no, that was four, oh eight oh seven.
Go to Chrome.
Isn't it supposed to pop up?
Yeah.
Mine didn't pop up, Phils.
Good, Councilman Harvey?
I'm sorry?
You got it?
No, I'm not voting.
I'll just refresh it. And save it up. There you go.
Oh, okay, thank you. Refresh. I need refreshing, I had to make sure.
Did you confirm, Mr. Montgomery? There we go.
Thank you.
That was fun.
We're getting used to it, to get the bugs out of it.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Counsel, we have one add-on request. It's going to be... Approved report of change order for number three for the East Texas Gravity Sewer Main Project for an increase of $284,087.46 total contract with increase $2,746,023.48.
Make the motion that we had number 13. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. To accept the agenda as amended.
Need a audience?
Oh, any one from the audience have a question about the amendment? All right. Everybody vote?
Yes, it's time to vote.
Yep.
So now we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make the motion we approve the agenda as amended. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? All right, please cast your vote.
Yay.
All right, having agenda. All right, there are no ceremonial matters or recognition of guests and no committee reports. We'll start with unfinished business.
Adopted ordinance amending the Police Department operations budget by appropriating $166,850.62 to compensate canine handlers for overtime from the 2018 and 2019 general fund fund balance. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
I just wanted, or Mr. Williams, do you want to?
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna make, make a note here that Councilman Darby and Councilman Williams will be reaching out to Chief McWilliams as far as going forward and certain policies and procedures that they would like to see. And I think we're very clear on how we'd like things to proceed going forward. Is that fair, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think these, I was gonna let me say something, I think these need to be done, I mean, actually the way it's written, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for it today, I am for it, we know we gotta pay, we know it's a law, you know? But we need to really get started on writing these management regulations, I have to mayor to get involved.
That's, that's also my position too, really having an interest in people getting what they should have gotten already. And since we got a lot of loose ends, I feel that I can't support the ordinance as written today.
All right, any comments? Please cast your vote.
Mine's, keeps losing the, what, what's the code?
Jeremy, will you put it so his screen does not timeout at all? It's zero eight zero seven.
Did you get that on tape?
Can you raise that vote up some? It's loose, it's mine.
Cool, thanks.
Adopted ordinance amending the Fire Department operations budget by appropriating $13,877.67 to compensate a canine handler for overtime from the 2018 and 2019 general fund fund balance. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, again, I've visited with Councilman Williams and Councilman Darby and on, is going forward with the two dogs in the fire department and have also spoken with the chief prior to the meeting. And I believe we're, what we're gonna do in this case is proceed with an exit strategy for those two animals going forward for 2019.
All right, additional comments?
Well, again, I appreciate David, you know, talking, we, we should've done it earlier, I apologize for that, David. But again, with the mayor, you know, you know, we need to, until this happens, we need to keep up with these regulations or get started on them at least, and hopefully it happens soon.
Ready to vote? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopted ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the 2019 general fund to provide for payment of the debt service for the $60 million LCDA revenue bond City of Bossier City Louisiana project, series 2018. The bonds, final reading.
So moved.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 18-1014 and 1205 Boone Street demolition.
Counsel, this demolition became, came before the council on December the 4th and it was a unanimous vote in favor of the demolition. The first bid is from Justin J. Reeves LLC. The bid bond is included. It's for $7,999.00. The next bid is from Lathan Construction LLC. The bid bond is included. It's for $4,900.4900.00. The next bid from LaDoyt, oh, sorry, LDB Enterprises is going to have to be rejected, there's no bid bond included. The next bid is from Lou Chandler, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $6,890.6890.00. And the last bid is from Sims, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $7,121.7121.00. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Harvey. All right, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirements for repairs to the collapsed gravity main on 1905 Venus Drive at a cost of $220,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency funds and enter into a contract with Pulley Construction, Inc. for the remainder of the work. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement for repairs to the high service pumps at the water treatment plant at a cost of $25,000 to come from water capital contingency funds. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Second. First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience on this item? Questions from council? Cast your vote. Page Montgomery down there. Did you vote? Hmm? Did you vote?
Yeah.
Adopted ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement for repairs to the gravity main that connects Dollar Mania and the apartment complex due north to the gravity main along East Texas at a cost of $210,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency funds and enter into a contract with Pulley Construction, Inc. for completion of work. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to approve the mayor to execute an act of donation to accept lot 1,000 of Victoria Meadows subdivision unit number one as per plat recorded in book 1601, page 528 through 529 of the records of Bossier Parish. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $14 million to come from the 2018 LCDA bond fund to be used to design, develop and construct Tinsley Park baseball improvements. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
I have, like...
Yes, sir.
Mark, can you?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure you have all the backup to this as far as what this is for and what it entails.
Yes, sir.
You sitting over there thinking about it, weren't you?
And before we start, what was, if I'm, you know, there's been a lot of holiday cheer between last year and this year, but one, weren't we talking about 10 million?
Well...
I'm just going back to an original...
That's what it was, 10 million.
...compilation of numbers and it, it just kind of, when you jump 40% on 10 million, that's, to me, that's a material number. Would you agree, Ms. Fernandez? Thank you. So I'm just curious how we jumped from 10 to 14.
Well, I'll tell you where the 14 comes from.
But how did we get to the 10?
I don't, I'm not sure where the 10 came from.
It came from Louis Cook and Parks and Rec. That's where the 10 came from.
Okay. I think, well, did you hear, Ms. Fernandez, it came from Parks and Recreation, they...
Yeah, and how did, but they obviously had, you know, a conceptual idea in their mind and you understand, I'd like to know, not necessarily here, but...
Yes, sir.
I would like an answer to that.
Well, that's easy to do.
You know, and I know you can't answer that today.
I know they had a budget roughed out, it came to 10 million and, but the more we got into it, we, we kind of honed in on this facility that was built at Sterling, Louisiana, that's what I just gave you a photograph of. And we visited with the designers of this facility who had the real, real numbers of what this cost. The construction budget for what's in front of you there was, is about 11 and a half million dollars and that's probably the number we need to compare to the 10 million. A million and a half difference is a big difference, but I, I suspect that the numbers at Parks and Recreation just represented construction cost of the facility. And this 14 million, the way I get there, it includes the construction cost and the design cost. There's some surveys of the land that need to be done. There's wetlands to be mitigated. We recently learned how that plays out. And then I threw in a pretty big number for contingency and that's how I get to 14 million dollars. David, you done? You done?
Yeah, for now.
Wasn't, I got these in my truck outside, but I don't have them with me. But wasn't this 10 million dollars for all the things we was gonna do, like the Field of Dreams Park and parking at Tinsley, parking at Metta View? Wasn't that all that in there? 10 million dollars a total, wasn't it? The, the big budget, there's a couple of them. List of projects that we might've used the bond money on and there was just a lump sum of $20 million in there for Parks and Recreation that included this as well as those other things you're talking about. But, but I don't know of any itemized list that comes to $20 million for Parks and Recreation projects. It was just a, a lump sum budget number that...
Well, here's what, what I, I'm sorry, are you...
Let me ask some more. So where are these, I might have asked Clay better. Where are these fields gonna go? Cause Tinsley's got fields around there, we got more land back on the side, now we got some, but where are these gonna go? They're gonna go back behind the five fields at Tinsley Park. There's, there's, there's about, the city owns about 72 acres of land back there and that's where it's gonna go. That's, that's where we put the driveway in with the new parking lot, back that way? Yes, sir.
Yeah, sir, it'd be going off that corner where you turn right to go to Old Shed Road. You going back where we took the trees off the property back there?
Yeah.
This is where we are putting in the five field complex back there, the fence will be a 225, infield's will be turfed, so you won't have to cancel any games. Outfield's will be grass. In that, you'll also have like eight parking spaces for the RVs with hookups, water, electric, sewer, so people can come in. And one corner over there, we're looking to add a ADA field for the handicap, ball players or, you know, we got a lot of service people that might be interested in doing something out there also.
So will, will we keep the ADA ballpark at...
Yes, sir.
Metta View?
They, they won't keep the Challenger field at, at Swan Lake to be with Lily. Yes, sir.
And this proposal, I left that out, it, it includes the five baseball fields plus the one handicap accessible field. Clay, do you, did you see that? Do you remember, not to put you on the spot though, did you see that 10 million dollars for all this stuff or was it, cause I got a list of stuff like that, what, what...
No, sir.
What Louis gave us, you know?
No, I...
It's 10, that's a total of everything?
I would, I would request, Mr. President, if someone wishes to speak, come to the mic.
I'm sorry, Clay, go ahead.
Uh, we're working off, we were given the figure of 20 million.
Okay.
And we've taken that and we're gonna take the old fields there and put in turf on those, the ones that are in existence. At Tinsley now, they have a 300 fence, so we'll be able to play all ages there. And the advantage of this will be people want to schedule and come play tournaments, we'll be wide open. You got Interstate 20 to the south, you got Interstate 220 to the north, many hotels, motels, a lot of restaurants, a lot of things for people to do here. When we go visit these other sites, they don't have the facilities in town to handle the crowds and everything. I don't know if y'all been out and visited some other places, but it's scarce. You know, we got a lot to offer people, let's take advantage of it, let's get them here.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm not arguing the, the merits of the project by any means. What I'm speaking to is that when we started with the 60 million dollar bond issue, we had a schedule of expenditures or needs, let's say. And when you start jumping pretty soon, you know, the projects that we contemplated, you know, we jumped 4 million here and then is this gonna increase? Cause normally it's 10%, so let's just go ahead and say 15 million, right?
Well...
And change orders and then there's gonna be issues and so we're up to 16 million, you know, and you know how it goes. I mean, I've been here, I don't know, 17, 18 years, so I kind of have learned a little way of the land. I hadn't been here as long as Mr. Hall, but, or the mayor, or Pam, so, but anyway, it, the thing is, is we have a finite amount of money. That's 64 million, is that correct?
60.
63 million. So before we venture off, I, I would respectfully request, I would like to sit down with Coach and Mark and the mayor and, you know, another councilman, we can have three, and, and let's get a budget.
Okay.
Okay, rather than just, you know, here we go and before you know it, we've spent all the money and we hadn't completed what our original objectives were on the 60 million dollar bond issue. And I, if, I don't want to speak on behalf of the council, but I'm one up here and I've certainly dedicated my efforts to being involved with the budget process and making sure that we stay within our means and, and spend the money in a prudent manner. Again, it's in no way talking about the merits, it's about, we have a finite amount of money and how are we gonna spend it? Is that fair?
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. But, but I'll just say in closing that Clay reminded me, we're also gonna redo the existing field, the five existing fields at Tinsley Park is in this budget also. And in my budget number, there's a great big number for contingency, so I'm just willing...
Well, I would just like to learn, you know what I mean, get it in my head, so if you could prepare those documents and then whatever the mayor and Pam would like to add to that and anyway, let's, let's get a game plan.
Okay.
All right.
Got it. David, if you'd like me to be there, I would, because I've been involved in baseball a whole, long time.
Yeah, absolutely.
In the fields. Thank you, Marco.
I'm next on the agenda, I thought you might have more questions.
This?
Yeah. Thank you. She was looking bad at you too, Mark.
I mean, she balled her fist up, I don't know. All right, are we ready to, any more discussion from the council? Okay, please cast your vote on this item.
Oh, shit.
What'd you say?
I'll have that now.
Sorry.
What?
You had already voted, Mr. Williams.
Oh, he got on to him for that too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
You've already voted for the next item.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $19,000 to come from the general fund building maintenance and repairs to be used to replace the stove top vent hood for building located at 716 Bearcat Drive. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience on this agenda item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer sub basin BC 14 rehabilitation project for a total of $2,093,000 to come from the sewer contingency fund. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Discussion from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting chapter six alcoholic beverages of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Discussion, council questions?
That's a long one, Jim, I fell asleep reading that thing.
I did too.
Can you give us a down and dirty?
The real, the real deal was, you know, I met with a few council members and the idea was to open up the ability to have special events and activities down in the, in the region, the Festival Plaza region where we have alcohol. And, and, and there were events that we were also foreclosing at other places that have alcohol license because we didn't have a special events permit. So the, the real meat of it is, we cleaned up a lot of definitions and things that were outdated and, and more in line with that particular deal. But this will allow special events to be had at Christmas in the sky, we don't have a special events permit, but places that have alcohol license, they can, they can get one and, and we can authorize. There's a number of events that happen that are requested at the Civic Center that we don't have a special events permit. They have an alcohol license there, it should be, should not be a problem. This will also allow for additional people to be able to come to the setup that we have at the festival region down there to, to create food trucks and, and sell alcoholic festivals and activities that are down there. So there's, there, there's a little bit of a follow-up to this. There'll be a, a street performer ordinance that I've already prepared and I haven't sent it down because we gotta work out who's gonna manage the, the components of, of dealing with that, but, but that'll be following soon where you get a permit that lasts for a year, it's fairly inexpensive and allows you within that area with certain restrictions not to perform at certain locations where you obstruct traffic and other things to, to provide that, so, but this is basically opening up to create an opportunity for festivals to take place and allow alcohol to be served there, both, both by vendors there in the, in the region and by other people that, that seek a permit and, and pass all the requisite requirements to get a permit. So, uh, but this is basically opening up, uh, to create an opportunity for festivals to take place and allow alcohol to be served there, both, both by vendors there in the, in the region and by other people that, that seek a permit and, and pass all the requisite requirements to get a permit. I had a question that, not necessarily regarding the, um, excuse me, uh, the alcohol and the permits and so forth, but these street performers or vendors that get a year-long permit, insurance-wise, what, is there any thing that we're gonna? Basically, you know, we, we restrict what you can do. You can't juggle swords, tomahawks, other things. I mean, there's a limited, there's a number of things that you're prohibited from doing, but if you're gonna just go down there and, uh, play music or do, uh, thing Something that's subtle with little exposure as far as the city goes. Well, it could be a lot of exposure if they do the naked cowboy thing, but, but my point is There's an insurance policy for that, by the way. But, but, uh, but bottom line is, they're, they're gonna be the kind of things that generally won't create it. And there's enough restrictions in there that the police can adequately enforce, location and other issues. And we're gonna make the permits where you have to have a laminated permit displayed at the, at the place, so the police can easily determine if you have sought a permit and obtained one. But if, if in, let's say, along those lines, when the special permits issued and, uh, we decide, or the administration and you and the police, that we don't like what's going on, we have the right to revoke that permit? Well, if the guy violates If the guy violates the permit, but there are specific Well, I'm just, you know, certain exposures, like what you were talking about, if they, they start You don't get to decide what you want to see and what you don't. It's a free speech issue, once you allow the permit No, 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 something that creates exposure to the city from a liability standpoint. I wasn't speaking to If it endangers the public or There you go. That's what my point is, is exposure to the city, if their, their performance changes or what we contemplated, not what their
Bless you.
speech is, but Right. the potential for liability Absolutely. That's all I was speaking to, that we have the right to revoke that permit. I just didn't want you not to like looking at the naked cowboy and wanting I'm good, all right?
Oh, as troubling as that is, you guys ready to vote? All right, cast your vote. You can vote.
Approve appointment of Aaron A. Boyle to the Metropolitan Planning Commission to replace Brett Madison. Term effective January eighth, twenty nineteen, and will expire May twentieth, twenty twenty-two. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council, yes, sir?
Yeah, I'd just point out that Major Bowles is here. He's got a very, very impressive resume. He's a Bossier person, born, raised, reared here. A very impressive military career, and, uh, I think he'd be a tremendous asset if approved for this position. Would you like to stand up or make any comments, Aaron?
Happy to be here. I think the last time I was here, I was a sophomore in high school.
Not standing. All right, cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number two for the Century Link Center upgrades and increase of seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. Contract price with change order eight hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for walk-ons Independence Bowl Parade, December twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I got one. Mayor, have you looked into why this thing's set somewhere for?
Yes, we have. I'll ask the chief to come up and give you the reasons.
Oh.
We did, it was a good question, and we did look into it, and there was a reason for it.
Okay.
Counsel, we originally received it, I think it was October twenty-ninth, um, it was a date, I think around two P M. And it was sent down to Patrol Division to, as far as staffing, as far as the logistics go for it. And they initially had presented it as it was basically gonna be the same event as they have in years past, which they had approximately about four or five floats and/or vehicles. This year it increased to like twenty-four, twenty to twenty-five floats, which changed the whole dynamics of it as far as how long we were gonna be blocking intersections, shutting down the bridges and such as that, and as far as the number of officers that were gonna be needed. So it took a little extra long, a little extra time for my people to coordinate with the event coordinator for the actual parade. Um, in the future, it shouldn't, shouldn't take that long to get it locked and knocked out. Of course, there was, uh, there was a holiday week involved in that time period too, so it was just a matter of making the logistics fit the event.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number three for the East Texas Gravity Sewer Main Project for an increase of two hundred eighty-four thousand eighty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. Total of contract with increase, two million seven hundred forty-six thousand twenty-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. All right, do we have any announcements from the council? Mayor?
None, thank you.
None? Anything from the audience? All right, meeting adjourned.